Well, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the November 18th regular city council meeting. We're gonna start right now. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. At this time, I'd like to call Nelson Hoover of the Skyline Mennonite Church to give the invocation. Would you all please rise?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies of the council. Thank you for this opportunity. Would you bow your heads with me? Father, thank you for these men and these ladies that are willing to give it their time. And there's a full room tonight, so there's obviously some issues to discuss. We ask you for your wisdom. And you've blessed these men and ladies of the council with different giftings and knowledge. And I just pray that you would bring that together tonight as they hear from the community. You would use their gifts, their knowledge, not in an antagonistic way, but it would bring it together for the beauty of the community. Bless them. Father, in your name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time that we have a lot for citizens to talk to council. And that's where you would fill one of these forms out back at that table. And you come to the podium and I'd like to have your name. And the timer will go on there. It's three minutes. And so the first one is Christina Post. Would you come forward, Christina? No? So you've brought your own fan club, huh?
That's the only reason they're here.
Is that it?
For this.
Good, good.
Well, I didn't prepare anything today. I'm just here to implore you to consider continuing on with the swimming pool for 2A and 6B. I think that it's at the very end of the agenda tonight. But I just want to voice my opinion on how important I feel like this project is for our community. In my opinion, it's more than a swimming pool at this point. It's are we moving forward or are we staying stagnant with our community growth? We live in a river town, and water safety is of the utmost importance for the children in this community. And with no place for them to learn swimming lessons, the river becomes an even more dangerous place for them. It is a valuable asset to this community, and this has been on the ballot five times since the 1980s and has been, has never come close to passing. With these two measures passing, this is the closest we have ever come to any type of development on this pool. So I just wanted to reach out to all of you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And I really hope that we can come up with a solution for the operational costs in some way because it is that important for this pool to be built in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, Chris Moffett.
Hello, city council. How you doing?
Good.
All right, I'm Chris Moffett, citizen of Canyon City and proud supporter of the coming pool. I wanted to express my support to, what's it say here? Codify the additional sales and use tax approved by the registered electors of the city on November 5th. I think the citizens of Canyon City have spoken that they want a pool. And I think the citizens of the county have spoken, and they don't want to pay for it with property tax money. So obviously, we gotta do something to figure out how to pay for operation of this. Maybe a lodging tax or use some of the money from the renegotiation of the contract with the Royal Gorge Bridge to support the pool in some way. But no matter what, I mean, backing her up there, I'm the president of Royal Gorge Rio, Fremont County's river base 501 C3. And, you know, river safety is of the utmost importance to me. We want kids to use the river safely. And right now, we will start seeing injuries due to people's lack of being able to swim in the next few years if we don't have something going on. So we need to figure something out to get the citizens of Canyon City a pool so they can live and swim. I'm also a Navy veteran. You can't join the Navy without learning how to swim. So, you know, if you're a little patriotic like myself here and you want some nice Navy sailors coming out of your beautiful town here, you get a, get a pool going. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And I was Air Force, so we flew over the Navy. Chip and Lucky or Lucy Arnold?
Lucky.
Lucky? Well, this is your lucky night then, Lucky. Come on up.
Um, well, well, um, I don't really know what to say.
You're gonna make a great politician.
Just like, I love that we are building a pool, and I think it is very fun. And we've been, and I've been wanting a pool again for a long time. And I think it is really fun that we are building a pool.
And now, a quick word from our sponsors. Do you feel like winter is too cold for you? Well, then come to Chip's hot cocoa stand. And, trademark Chip Arnold. Selling hot cocoa, and we will be donating 75% of profits in order to pay for operations for the pool.
Okay.
See ya.
Thank you, Lucky. Is it Heidi? Do you have a business plan? No.
Good evening, city council members and members of community. My name is Heidi Numson, and I am a 16-year-old resident of Canyon City. I'm here to speak on behalf of the youth of our town and to ask for your support in ensuring operational funding for our pool. The pool is more than just a place for swim. It is a gathering space for families, a training ground for young adult, for youth, for young athletes, and a vital resource for teaching water safety to children and adults alike. It strengthens our community by providing, by providing an affordable, accessible way for people for all ages to stay active and connected. As a teenager, the pool would offer opportunities for recreation, community gathering, and employment opportunities. Water safety is critical in a community like ours. The pool plays a key role in teaching children and adults to swim, potentially changing lives. I understand that budgeting decisions can be difficult, but I urge you to prioritize the operational funding of our pool. Thank you for taking the time to hear my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Is that it? Just these right there? Okay, we're gonna discuss the pool. I think that, I know that the Rec District is having their meeting Tuesday night and then see what the outcome of that is, then we will be discussing the, our, there's plenty of, I think there's plenty of ideas out there to do this. And the council is very much in favor of that. And yes, we're gonna do the first reading for the three percent, three-tenth of a percent tax that will go forward. And then we'll see what the Recreation District does and what other ideas, thoughts, and budgeting the city can do. So that will be Wednesday. We do have a meeting here. Is that be at the Vision Committee?
There will be a special meeting. It's an executive session after the Vision Meeting.
Okay, so we'll be discussing that then. But we're all in favor of it. We just have to see how to get there, sort of pull it across the finish line, okay? But thank you all for coming. And we have any council members that have any announcements or anything at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
John?
Thank you. I'd like, you know, thank you all for being here and for your interest in the pool. The, and what the mayor has said, I think, is, is pretty much the sense of council. You know, and we want to be able to think outside the box in discovering ways that we may be able to, you know, we have, the path is clear how to build the pool, but now the question is operation. One of the things that we just heard is that perhaps the city could use Royal Gorge Bridge income to do that. Unfortunately, that takes a charter change for us to be able to use bridge monies. But that doesn't mean, that's not a, that's not a, oh dear, we can't do it that way. It's just, there are other things that may have to be done. And there's, that's just an example of the thinking that council is going through to try to find a way to help this community get a pool. Thank you.
Okay, Emily.
Thanks. It is a busy week. I don't know how we get so busy sometimes, but I wanted to mention several things coming up. I usually do announce the monthly community advisory group meetings for the Cotter, the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund Site. And this week, instead of being the third Tuesday at 3:00 PM, we're doing it tomorrow, the third Tuesday at 1:00 PM, and it's a Zoom-only meeting. But if you're interested in finding the Zoom link for that and would like to participate, we'd love to have you. So that's tomorrow at 1:00 PM. We're also, a couple of us are going to be talking on the radio tomorrow morning at 9:30 in regard to the Black Hills rate increase request. And in addition to the radio at 9:30, we do have the three state public utilities commissioners here in City Hall in these chambers tomorrow for a public comment hearing from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And certainly, we're encouraging residents, businesses, local governments, anyone who want to make comment on that proposed rate increase request to be here in that timeframe, 4:00 to 7:00 tomorrow. And then I want to mention, too, that a local nonprofit, Colorado Citizens Against Toxic Waste, has a program, a panel discussion at the museum this Saturday at 1:00 PM. And that's just another update in regard to the Superfund Site.
Thank you. Amy.
Thank you. Just echoing your and John's comments, thanks so much, everyone, for being here this evening and raising your concerns and desires for what you'd like to see the city do moving forward. Greatly appreciate and welcome the creative, outside-of-the-box thinking as to how the operations for the pool could potentially be funded. I serve as the city council's representative to the Trail Use Policy Committee. We did have a committee meeting in the last week or so. And one new change that came out for our 2025 events is that the committee did determine that all pass-through events on our trails also need to sign the same agreement with the city that the events that kind of use the trails for the full day need to sign. This is to ensure that the city can make the determination on events based on weather and also to ensure that those events also provide a damage deposit. There were some, some damage to the trails done by the Cripppler event earlier this year because it did occur on our Twisted Sistern Trail up at the gorge during pretty heavy rain. And unfortunately, because it was a pass-through event, it didn't have those kind of protections in place. So that is one change that we'll be making for the 2025 events. I also have the pleasure of serving as the city council representative to the Library and Museum Board. And I wanted to note, particularly since there are so many kiddos in the audience, that there is a rocket, it is rocket science event on November 22nd from 2:00 to 4:00 in the Rotary Pavilion. This is in partnership with the Estes Cosmic Club and the Library and Museum, specifically designed for children ages nine to 13. And folks do need to register in advance to participate in that to ensure that they have enough supplies. As always, our library and museum are incredibly busy, and they have a lot of really great events going on. So if folks don't already follow their Facebook pages, highly recommend doing so so that you can stay up to date on all of the activities that they have on offer for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, I'm gonna get right with you in a minute here. Hold on. Oh, 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 hold on. Okay, it's okay, just a minute.
Jim Hogan.
Jim Hogan, I know you, Jim.
Jim Hogan?
Yeah, I know Jim Hogan, just a minute.
Most of you know me.
I know, hold on. Okay, and I would like to announce that Thursday, we have Coffee with a Cop at Muggs, right? Come on out and meet our wonderful officers and, what's it, is it Muggs? No, is it Bean Peddler? It's a Bean Peddler. It's one of those coffee places that, okay. It's really, I go there, but it's too early in the morning. Okay, Jim, what would you like to say?
The, I just observed that non-construction company is doing a high school, millions of dollars. They got money for that like money was going out of style, appears to me. And also, the middle school is getting a new gymnasium so they don't have to have the kids eating their food in the gymnasium anymore. Non-construction company is doing that also. And it just appears to me that money is really being thrown around on these projects of millions of dollars, like money was going out of style. And the reality is that the politicians have not been faithful with the border and all these other issues. That is an embarrassment for the taxpayers, honest taxpayers of this city. And I would think that there would be used materials from these projects for these fantastic new buildings that could be used if they were sold, they would make up that other two or three percent that you guys need in order to carry out this project like there was no restrictions on doing it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
For your.
You might go and talk.
Your consideration.
You might go ahead and talk to the school board.
What?
You talk to the school board. They'd be glad to have you. Okay, at this time, then, we have employee recognition. Butch, would you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members, other distinguished participants of the dais. I know you, you get excited whenever you see me show up at city council meetings because you know that that's the meeting we're gonna recognize our employees for achieving a milestone of employment with the city. So tonight, we're gonna recognize two employees, one for 10 years of service and one for 25 years of service. The first employee, John, if I could get you to step up here, please, is John Dickens. John was hired on October 20th, 2014 as a police officer, too. On December 27th of 2020, John was advanced to police sergeant. Then on May 16th, 2022, John was appointed as the Canyon City Police Department Administrative Sergeant, a position he currently holds. And as has become our tradition, I would like to invite his commander to step up and say a few words about John.
Thank you, guys, for having us. Appreciate it. I think it's an important note that John has been in law enforcement for almost 36 years now. And we are honored that he's chosen to spend 10 of those years with us. He is the backbone of a lot of what we do. He is the reason we're able to accomplish as much as we can or as much as we have, specifically with equipment, the different things that we acquire. He's just an incredible source of experience, source of knowledge, and somebody that everybody within our organization leans heavily on. So we are incredibly honored to have you on our team, incredibly proud to work with him, and looking forward to several more years, hopefully.
Thank you, Commander.
Unfortunately, our other employee to be recognized couldn't be here, but it would be, I would be remiss if I still didn't recognize her. This is Kathy Uhlsh. Kathy was hired in November, on November 15th, 1999, as an accounts payable technician in the finance department. On February 3rd, 2003, Kathy assumed the duties of building inspector in the building department. On December 1st of 2008, Kathy was assigned the additional responsibilities of accounting technician in the finance department to process payroll and complete other accounting duties. This was in addition to her duties as a building inspector. Kathy was promoted to the interim building officer of building office position on February 9th, 2017. On May 5th, 2018, Kathy was made the permanent building official for the city of Canyon City, a position she continues to hold. And luckily, I don't have to ask her supervisor to step up to the podium because he's already at the dais.
Thank you. I just want to thank Kathy for her many years of service. She's done a lot of work in various departments for the city over the years and has a love for the community and certainly making sure that buildings are safe for, for the public. So, and thank Kathy for her 25 years of service.
Okay. Now, if I could get the council members to step down in front of the dais. John, we're gonna get you over there and we'll get a picture photo. Do you gentlemen want to join? Never known you to shy away from a picture. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. I'd ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on November 4th, the general government meeting on November 6th, special city council meetings on October 9th, which was the Art Committee, and October 30th, which was the Water Committee. 8B authorizes the mayor to reappoint Gary Clark and Fred Tony to the Board of Adjustments. 8C authorizes the city administrator to sign a water service agreement for the private Lincoln Hale water main. 8D authorizes purchase of a police cruiser and amount not to exceed $42,500. 8E awards bid 71-24 water main to Sunrise Oil Field Supply and an amount not to exceed $12,576. 8F is to receive and file monthly budget summary, and 8G is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Thank you. Any additions, corrections, or questions of the administrator? Okay, seeing then, then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Emily.
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Is that a draw? Okay, Andrea, got it. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
We ask the city administrator for his report.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have the written report in your binder or in your, on your tablets. Couple things of note, the Public Utilities Commission, as Councilmember Tracy mentioned, they will be here tomorrow to hold their public comment hearing. That's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. The public is welcome. Hopefully, we have as many or more people for that meeting. I think it's extremely important for people to show up and let the Public Utilities Commission know what they think about the rate increase from Black Hills. Black Hills has amended their rate increase request, but again, we still encourage the public to come to that meeting. And then the Engineering and Public Works Departments, they're working on installing the digital speed limit signs. You'll see those on Highway 50 in and out of the Highway 50 corridor here. Happy to take any questions from city council.
Any questions? When you said the digital, are they on the trailer that we have now or are they gonna?
These will be mounted next to the speed limit sign. So you'll have the static speed limit sign, and then there will be a digital sign as well that you may have seen in other communities where it flashes the speed that you're going at the driver.
And it's 24 hours a day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions? We have down here to continue the public hearing. What, what do you, what is that?
That is the budget hearing. We have to continue that public hearing to the December 2nd meeting. So we do need a motion for that.
Okay, I'd call then for a motion to continue the public hearing on the budget for the October the 2nd meeting.
December the 2nd.
I'm glad you caught that. Emily.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the budget to our December 2nd meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions on that?
I was gonna give it to Chair.
You got two now. Okay, any discussions on that, or questions on that? Could I have a little call?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, then we're gonna go on to a discussion and introduction and first reading by the, by title only of ordinance 8, series 2024, entitled An Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Section 3.12.070 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Vendor Fees and Sales Tax Remittance. Could we have a discussion of that?
I will turn this over to our Finance Director, Tammy Nordeig, and possibly attorney sellers.
Do you want to take it, or would you like me to take it?
I can take it. I mean, I think Director Nordeig's memo is, it's as simple as that. There was new legislation passed during this past legislative session, and it, you are no longer allowed to place a cap on vendor fees. And so we had to remove that cap, which is currently set at $200. So the percentage is in your code now. That, the language is unchanged. There's just an accept. It shall not be more than $200 at the end that's being removed. So that's the only change. It's pretty straight, straightforward legislation.
Okay, could you explain to the audience what the lender's fee is?
The vendor cap fee is, or the vendor fee is basically the amount that the vendor's allowed to keep of the sales tax that they've collected.
And I think its intent is to cover the administrative costs of remitting sales tax to the city.
And there's no cap on that right now? With this?
Yeah, it's just a percentage, but there's no outwardly cap. That's not allowed anymore.
That's the only move, the only change we got.
Yep, correct.
Any questions of our staff? Then I would invite someone to make a motion and a second. Emily.
I'll move for approval of ordinance number eight, series of 2024, on first reading.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to B. Okay, let's move on to B, which is regarding the pool, the tax. It's introduction and first reading by, did I do that right? Yeah. By title only of Ordinance Nine, Series twenty-twenty-four, entitled Amending Title Three of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning the Addition of a New Fund and Amending Sections three point one-two-point-zero-one-zero and three point one-three-point-zero-one-zero to codify the additional sales and use tax approved by the registered voters, electors of the city on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four. We'd ask our administrator to discuss it.
Okay. Again, I will ask our Finance Director to give an, a report.
This ordinance, as titled, codifies the sales tax that was authorized at the November fifth election. And we do have to include it in code in order for us to be able to start collecting it. We also need a fund established for our budget. So we have to have somewhere to account for. We would like to keep that separate, similar to how we do our sale, our sales tax that's dedicated to the roads. We want to have the sales tax that's dedicated for the swimming pool construction to have its own fund as well, to make it a little bit more transparent.
Okay.
Be, because we are state-collected, we do have to have this done in order to let the state know that we've taken these steps and that they can start, you know, updating their system for a January first implementation. This is first reading. Second reading will be at the December second meeting.
Okay. Any other questions of Tammy or administrator? Oh, Emily, Amy rather, Amy, sorry.
Thanks, Mayor Chapman. I had two requested edits. I think that it would be prudent of us to title the fund Swimming Pool Construction Tax Fund rather than Swimming Pool Tax Fund. I think it's really important that we are, have this level of transparency and clarity, particularly given how complicated these issues are between the city and the Rec District, to ensure that everybody understands what the sales, sales tax will be going towards. That would be the, both the title of Chapter three point three-five, as well as the references in Section three point three-five point oh-one-oh and three point three-five oh-two-oh. And then I also think that there's just a typo in Section three point three-five oh-three-oh, and that it should say, "For the sole purpose of supporting the financing of the construction of a community recreation pool." Thanks.
So, Emily, go ahead, Emily.
Oh, I, I just wanted to add that, just as a reminder for the public that, not to go into great detail, but we did have the three ballot issues regarding the pool on the ballot. And the two that passed were this one, for the marginal increase in sales tax levied by the city on sales and use for things purchased within the city limits by anyone. And then the other one that passed was a Recreation District ballot issue that authorizes the Recreation District to issue bonds and that this stream of revenue that's collected from the marginal increase sales tax would then go to pay back those bonds over time. So I just thought we should add a little bit more detail on that.
Thank you, Emily. So we can include, do you wish to include those changes that Amy has made?
If, if we could ask her to repeat the first one, we didn't quite get your suggested title. For the fund.
So currently, the proposed language for the fund is Swimming Pool Tax Fund. I would propose that we instead title it Swimming Pool Construction Tax Fund, given that these, that this marginal sales tax increase can only be used for the construction of the swimming pool.
Got it. Thank you so much.
So if we were, whoever makes the motion has to incorporate that into the, into the verbiage?
The motion can be to approve it on first reading with Councilmember Schmisher's amendments.
Okay.
If that's easier.
Emily?
I was going to try to itemize it all, but okay. I'll move for approval of Ordinance Number Nine, Series of twenty-twenty-four, on first reading with the additions and corrections that were suggested by Councilmember Schmisher.
I'll second. Chair? Any questions on that motion? Then would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemmerich?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming. Is there anything before council or we? That's all on my agenda. We could talk the rest of the night if you'd like. So, huh?
That's it from staff, sir.
We're adjourned. Thank you.